Please stand for the question.
We begin to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heaven and Father, I ask that you be with us tonight as we make decisions regarding our community. Guide us and direct us, protect us, protect all those who serve our community, our first responders, and keep everyone safe over the holiday weekend, another busy holiday weekend. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Will call you need her?
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Lorenz?
Here.
Counselor Ellatharp?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
Counselor Sivola will be absent this evening, but a form is declared.
Have any modifications to the agenda?
Mayor, I move to add Valleywide Health Care Proclamation to Section F Proclamations, Communications, and Appointments.
Second. It's been moved in second for modifications to the agenda. I put proclamation for Valleywide Healthcare under proclamation, communications, and appointments. Is there any more discussion? Needa?
Counselor Ellatharp?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mayor Becker, just a note on the agenda, there will not be a report with kids connection this evening. Thank you, sir. Okay. Approval consent agenda, I'm into a very late meeting July 18th, review and approval of Council table.
Will we approve the consent agenda and the against table report?
I second that motion.
It moved in second, if we approve approval of consent agenda, the minutes are regular meeting, July 18th, 2019, and review and approval of Council table. Any more discussion? Needa?
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Ellatharp?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, Proclamations, Communications, and Appointments. Mr. Mayor?
I have the pleasure tonight presenting a one-year certificate for a couple of my employees. So Vic, if you'll come up. Vic is one of our parks, he is our park specialist, not one. He is the man. So Vic has done a really good job working in our parks and glad to have him on board. And this is his certificate for one year. Come here. And the next one is Dave Cisneros, who'll come up. I was really pleased when we were able to steal Dave. He has a great deal of equipment experience and just his former background has really been an asset to not only our streets, which is where he works, he's one of our streets maintenance, but he also has skills in the water and sewer, so he's able to help out in the water and sewer as well. So Dave, congratulations.
Okay, we have proclamation for Valleywide Healthcare. Proclamation from Valleywide Health Systems and proclamation National Health Center Week 2019. Whereas for over 50 years, community health centers have provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive, primary preventative healthcare in our nation's underserved communities, delivering value to and having a significant impact on America's healthcare system. Whereas the country's largest primary care network, health centers are the healthcare home for 28 million Americans in over 11,000 communities across the nation. One in every 12 people in the United States gets their care in a community health center. Whereas, health centers are critical, are a critical element of the health system, serving both rural and urban communities and often providing the only accessible and dependable source of primary care in their communities. Nationwide, health centers serve one in every five residents of rural areas. Whereas every day, health centers develop new approaches to integrating a wide range of services beyond primary care, including oral health, vision, behavioral health, and pharmacy services to meet the needs and challenges of their communities. Whereas health centers are governed by patient-majority boards, ensuring that the patients of each healthcare center are engaged in their own healthcare decisions. Whereas, health centers are locally owned and operated, small businesses that serve as critical economic engines, helping to power local economies by generating 54.6 billion in economic activity in some of the country's most economically deprived communities. Whereas, health centers nationally employ more than 220,000 people, including physicians, nurse practitioners, physician assistants, and certified nurse midwives, who work as part of their multidisciplinary clinic or teams designed to treat the whole patient. Whereas, the health center model continues to prove an effective means of overcoming barriers to healthcare access, including geography, income, insurance status, improving healthcare outcomes, and reducing healthcare system cost. Whereas, health centers reduce overall cost of care by helping manage patients' chronic conditions, which keeps them out of costlier healthcare settings like hospital emergency rooms. Whereas, health centers are in the front lines of emerging healthcare crises, providing access to care for our nation's veterans, addressing that opioid epidemic, and responding to public health threats in the wake of natural disasters. Whereas, National Healthcare Center Week offers the opportunity to celebrate America's over 1,400 health center organizations with over 11,000 service delivery sites. Their dedicated staff, board members, patients, and all of the responsible for their continued success and growth since the first health centers opened their doors more than 50 years ago. Whereas during National Health Center Week, we celebrate the legacy of America's health centers and their vital role in shaping the past, present, and future of America's healthcare system. So now therefore I Dale Becker, Mayor of Montevista, do hereby proclaim August 4 through 10, 2019, as National Health Center Week. I encourage all Americans to take part in this week by visiting their local health center and celebrating the important partnership between America's health centers and the communities they serve.
Amen. Very much so.
Proclamation of National Night Out. Proclamation by the City of Montevista, 2019 National Night Out. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch, NATW, sponsors a national community building campaign on Tuesday, August 6, 2019, entitled National Night Out. And whereas the National Night Out campaign provides an opportunity for neighbors in Montevista to join over 38 million neighbors across 16,000 communities from all 50 states, U.S. territories, and military bases worldwide. And whereas National Night Out is an annual community building campaign which promotes strong police-community partnership and neighborhood camaraderies to make our neighborhoods safer, more caring places to live and work. And whereas, neighbors in Montevista assist the Montevista Police Department through joint community-building efforts and support the National Night Out 2019. And whereas, it is essential that all neighbors of Montevista come together with police and work together to build a safer, more caring community. And now therefore, I, we, I Dale, Mayor Becker, and Montevista City Council, do hereby call upon all neighbors of Montevista to join the City of Montevista, the Montevista Police Department, and the National Association of Town Watch in support for National Night Out on Tuesday, August 6, 2019. Further let it be resolved that I Dale Becker, we, Montevista City Council, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 6, 2019, as National Night Out in Montevista, dated the first day of August in the year of 2019.
One more proclamation.
Proclamation by the City of Montevista. Whereas, public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' health, safety, and well-being of our everyday lives. And whereas such services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of the public works professionals, director, managers, and employees at all levels of government who are responsible for planning, building, operation, and maintenance of transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste systems, public buildings, streets, park, and events essential to serve our citizens. And whereas, the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works department is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Whereas, the City of Montevista City Council recognizes the contributions of public works professionals and extends sincere appreciation for their commitment to the excellence in their efforts to improve and enhance our community. Now therefore, I Dale Becker, Mayor of the City of Montevista, do hereby proclaim that council and citizens of Montevista show gratitude for a job well done, dated the first day of August in the year of 2019. And I will stand and applaud you all. Thank you guys.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to, how them all come up and you can give them that framed copy of the proclamation?
That would be awesome.
Come on, boys. Come on, Rob.
We got a few absent, we got a few on vacations. Can I stand up here? These gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, do a ton of work for us, so really do appreciate the work they do.
Very much so. Appreciate what you do. Appreciate seeing you out there in the morning.
Thank you guys. Appreciate all the work you guys do. It shows in our community.
I have technical difficulties. It's me, I'm in my computer.
Okay. Citizen comments, special presentations. Schedule appearances in order to be included in this portion of the agenda, please file appropriate form with a city clerk no later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. Our first guest will be Friends of Sky High and guests.
Carla?
Good evening.
Good evening, girl.
Signing. Thank you guys for letting us speak. We're here to support and action later on on addressing the IGA for, that's, I don't look here, the Sky High AIA contract. And with me here is our proposed team. We have Don Spencer from Spencer Architect and Brian Cook from Alcon. And these are part of the RFP that we've all looked at and elected to go with, with these folks as moving forward with the Sky High project. And as we all know, we, we all like to do business on a handshake and we're all very trustworthy, but it also comes down to formality. So we are, Don and Brian have worked on an AIA contract, you know, just so that we have everything, you know, all the i's crossed, or i's dotted and t's crossed, just because it is business and we are dealing with a lot of money. And I believe, Brian, do you want to talk about the contract a little, or what you think about Alcon?
So, anyways, we're excited to work on the project with Friends of Sky High. We're working with Don and his team to start renderings for, I guess, the initial fundraising portion of it. So we went through that process and have been selected to do that. We're been starting to work on it and starting to get some things out there and spend some money, so we're ready to sign a contract and get going. So we do have an AIA contract that Donna's appointed us to, and we've gone through that and sending it back and forth with, I think Forrest and Friends of Sky High to make sure we've got everything changed or adjusted the way we want it. And so we're kind of just at that point in the process, but very excited to be a part of the team to hopefully bring that vision to a reality.
Okay. Well, thanks for having us tonight. I'm Don Spencer, Architect and Principal of the firm. We've met with the Sky High Committee at least once formally and are in the process of scheduling another meeting next to arrive at the parameters for the program for the project. And it's been a real pleasure so far to get that started. We've got some great ideas and looking forward to moving forward with it. Our initial in this contract addresses schematic design and conceptual design and design development. And in that, we'll be preparing drawings and cost estimates with Brian and his team to develop the program and then drawings that would kind of define the scope of the project for fundraising and for other purposes during that time. And then, once that's completed and we enter the fundraising stage, then we would have another addendum to the contract to do construction documents. So that's the way it's, the contract is set up. We're very excited to be on the team. Thank you.
Again, this is formality, you know, the city is the owner of the building, so that's why, you know, we're asking that the city's on the contract. And for the funding, I'm sure Forrest will go into it later, how that's going to happen, but I guess we would respectfully ask you folks when it comes to that point of the agenda, consider favorable action on it so we can continue to move forward. Again, as Don mentioned, we've had several meetings, you know, they've not been, well, we've been working on it without a contract, just because we all trust one another, because when we did approve the RFP and went with them, you know, that's how we work. But we do need to go ahead and button it up and get a contract so that everyone's protected and we can move forward. Anybody have any questions, these gentlemen?
I don't at this time. I just want to thank you guys for your work and the Friends of Sky High. It's a big thing to get this moved forward and I'm excited.
Yeah, we are too.
Yeah, we got a great team. It's going to be, it's going to be a fun project. It's going to be a challenge, but I think we're all up to it. And we're all local, that's another great thing.
My question, probably for Carla or anybody there, the contract ends up without the, without the cost involved that's in here. We know the cost, or I guess that's really what we're talking about in this contract is the development of the proposal, basically, the drawings and schematics.
And the estimate.
All of it. It's just kind of a blank spot in the contract. Just wanted to make sure. But I know what, I know what we've got, I know what the investment is in that part, so.
Right. The amount of the contract. And there's a lot to be vetted. You know, there's, you know, been some general discussion of what it may look like, but, you know, the group, you know, some of the user groups that will also be part of the working group to help put this program together, you know, we got to vet this out. It's going to be a process. And, you know, it's going to be open and hopefully inclusive, so, and, you know, the city has representation, user groups, so hopefully we get it done right.
Reiterate the remark about your, your work has gone a lot further and faster, it still drags, and I'll deal with that, but appreciate the work you've done on it and bringing people together, so we're looking forward to some good results.
Yeah, so are we. And, you know, as we get forward and the group vets it out, you know, there will be a presentation to the city council so that you guys are kept in the loop, so you know what's going on and what the process is too. This won't be the last you see of us.
That's exciting.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
Looking forward to it, guys.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate you guys doing the work that you've done already. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Do you want us to hang around for that other part? Down on the agenda, I guess.
There's some ways down there. So it'd be up to you guys if you wanted to hang out.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Sandless Valley Local Food Coalition.
I'm there. Thank you. I love hearing the word local. Thank you Carla for calling out the word local. I'm with the Sandless Valley Local Foods Coalition. My name is Liza Marin. I live in Suatch and work in Alamosa, and the Sandless Valley Local Foods Coalition works to foster an equitable local food system in the whole Sandless Valley. So we're working so that our kids in our schools are eating Sandless Valley potatoes and beef and that we're, we bring the Moki to the Montevista Farmers Market. I want to thank you all for supporting us. We wrote a USDA Farmers Market Promotion Program grant, really to support Deanne Elliott in her efforts to hire some staff for the market, because she's a little bit tired after seven years of running the market as a volunteer. And so thank you for the letter of support that you wrote for that proposal. I appreciate it, and we'll see, we haven't heard yet. We also have the Mobile Kitchen, and I, this is our local roots guide, so this is our effort to connect consumers with direct market producers. And I bookmarked a page where our Mobile Kitchen is that I'm talking about tonight with my business card. And so, sorry. So the page's bookmark has a picture of our Mobile Kitchen. Moki's been around for a long time. It's the turquoise bus that you see at the Montevista and Alamosa Farmers Market, and it used to belong to the Rocky Mountain Prevention Center, and Healthy Habits has been around for a long, long time. CSU Extension used to run it for many years, and then when the Rocky Mountain Prevention Center went, you know, kind of folded for a bit, they donated the Moki to us. So we ran it for another 10 years or so doing cooking demonstrations at the market, talking people into, you know, trying out something that's at the market that day and learning how to cook it. And the Environmental Health Department had an interaction with us, they really raised their standards, they wanted us to have three compartment sinks and hot and cold running water and a hood and come in the bus, not be out in the bus with the fly, be outside the bus with the flies. So we, so we fund rose and we came up with $20,000 that we invested in the Moki, and it is now a bona fide food truck. And we kind of grumbled about it in the beginning, but now we're super happy. It's very fun to have all this stainless steel, beautiful equipment to cook for the farmers market. And so we are just asking for a sponsorship from the City of Montevista. We thank you for a 2018 sponsorship, and so I'm just here to answer any questions, to thank you for previous support, and see if you might be willing to do so again.
What was our sponsorship last year?
$100.
And since I've been gone for a year or two, what is it now? How much do we have left in that fund? Less?
Yeah, I believe it's $2,300. Spitballing out of my memory, but certainly you have $500 available for that, so.
That's more than I thought.
Oh, less than $100, sorry. No, it was so, $1,600.
Right, it was, yeah, that's more like what I thought. We've had lots of things we gifted this year.
Well, I can understand that.
Yeah, yeah. Well, when we went through the budget process last year, council also agreed to reduce the funds that we had in our discretionary funds, so for the entire year, we've had less funds. Right. We started with a few less, but I still think we, it's a very worthy cause, and I was so happy to see the farmers market on Fridays. I love them. And I think we can put something toward that. Probably not as much as we had last year.
And we had talked about this at some length, and I think we're in a position to do at least the 300 level. Is that the consensus?
I think that's a good, I think that's a good number. And hopefully next year, if we get some good tax dollars in and we have a little better budget, there will be more to throw at it next year.
Well, thank you very much for that. And we would, we will give some love to the City of Montevista, and our, every recipe card that we pass out has our sponsors on it, and we also do a chalkboard "thank you" as well, so.
Right. So we need a motion. I move that we give the Moki, it's only to the Moki, right?
Yeah, it's to the Healthy Habits program, right, yeah.
Okay, and the Healthy Habits program around $300 for this year, with hopefully more in the budget next year.
Awesome.
It's been moved in second. Do we give $300 to Moki and the Food Coalition? Is there any more discussion? Needa?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Ellatharp?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, well, that was fun. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, forgive me if I don't stay for the rest of your meeting.
There you go. We're out to the farm market on Friday. I'm ready to go support it. It's wonderful.
Come tomorrow. Italian or Mexican, your choice.
Okay, we'll move on to citizen comments. City council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please limit comments to three minutes. Council will not take action at the same meeting. Council will not take action at the same meeting. State your name, please.
Margot Alexander. Hi, everybody. I am so excited to be here. I look forward to these meetings. I just have to say how wonderful the whole stampede thing was this year. The city looked absolutely, totally amazing. I have never seen the city look that clean, that tidy, and people were friendly, all the events were great. I mean, it was just a joy to be a part of this, and you know what? I asked my daughter, I said, "Where the heck were the police?" She says, "Didn't you see them?" I said, "No, I didn't see any." She said, "They were all over the place." So you guys did a great job. I don't know how well it went on your end, but from what I saw, it was just a delight to be part of this community. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. We go on to public hearings. Licensed liquor public hearing, new licenses. City council conducts these actions in the capacity of the local licensing authority. It'll be for Rain Brews LLC tavern license. So whoever's to start it.
All right. Yes, we need to adjourn and go into a public hearing, I think it'll be...
Okay. During the city council, we'll go into a public hearing.
All right. We will call this hearing the order. It's for today, August 1, 2019, before the Liquor Authority Board, which is the city council. And this is for a new tavern license at 104 Adams. The applicant is Rain Brews LLC. The way we'll conduct the hearing is, I'll probably call our clerk initially, and then the applicant. And if there are folks that wish to speak in favor of the application, we'll take those first, and then if there are folks that wish to speak in opposition to the license, we will take them next. So this point, I think, Nita, I'll call you first of all. And if you would, for the record, state your name and position with the city.
My name is Yunita Vance. I'm the city clerk for the city of Montevista. The city of Montevista, before you, city council, you're holding a public hearing for, as the Liquor Authority Board for the tavern license located at 104 Adams, to be known as Rain Brews LLC. This is a request for a new tavern liquor license. The business will be residing at the old facet building, which they have remodeled, and have all, and have had all the building and health department inspections, and have passed all of those inspections. Carol and Kyle Regenbach are here before you, before the Liquor Authority Board presenting their business tonight for consideration of approval. Rain Brews LLC will have available to, selections of craft brews, coffee, soda, and water. There will also be a light menu, which an example I just handed out to you. To get a tavern license, you have to have a light meal. Doesn't have to be a full course meal, it just has to be a light meal. Hours of operation are currently planned from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. The owners and operators will determine the needs and the desires of the community as business goes on. All paperwork has been received by the city clerk and is in order with all state and local guidelines for the application of a tavern liquor license. In your packet, you will find the application for their liquor license to the state, their business license for the city, their background checks, which is their fingerprint cards, which we have not received back, their fingerprint cards yet, but they did clear their background checks, site plan, menu, and articles of organization. If approved by the Liquor Authority Board this evening, the applicant will be given a 30-day temporary permit that will allow for the state application to be processed and approved or denied. If the state application is denied, they will contact me and ask for more information so that they can approve it. This is our first new liquor license within the city for at least seven years, so this is a new business with the new liquor license. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Nita, let me just go ahead and kind of go through a few things. You did a bit of an investigation here. You looked at the neighborhood. Are there other liquor licenses close to this establishment?
Yes, sir, there is. There's Nino's, which is a couple doors down from them, and that's the only liquor license right there in the area, in the, off the Adams.
How about Quincy's?
Oh, and Quincy's, sorry. Quincy's.
All right. Now, clerk, did you go ahead and publish a notice for this hearing in the newspaper? It's part of your job.
Yes, I did. That notice was published 10 days, which is required. It was published on our front door, which is our official publishing place. It was also published on the city of Montevista website under city council agendas.
Okay. Did you furnish them information to post a notice in their, or on their premises?
Yes, I did. They have a giant orange sign in their window, and it's visible to traffic actually going down Highway 160 and through Adams, with the date, location, and time of the hearing.
All right. And do you know how long that notice has been in the window?
That's been in there for 30 days.
Okay. Now, do you know whether the applicant submitted any petitions as part of their package here?
They do have a petition with them this evening that they have been circulating, so they do have that present with them this evening.
All right. And they did submit fingerprints, is that right?
Yes, they did.
Was there anything that came back in terms of their background search that was negative?
No, there is not.
Okay. Now, just so we can make a good record here, the, did they submit an application?
Yes, they did.
All right. How about a sales tax license?
Yes, they did.
How about a lease?
Yes, they did.
Okay. And that's something we might need to clean up, but I know the lease showed as the landlord didn't refer to the LLC. It just said Global. I'm not sure what their full name is, but we can get that kind of cleaned up, just so the LLC, I think, looks to me like it is the landlord, so. And how about driver's licenses? Did they submit those?
Yes.
It looks like they provided articles for the LLC.
Yes, they did.
And an operating agreement?
Yes.
And certificate of good standing from the state?
At this point in time, they wouldn't have a certificate of good standing, because they're a brand-new business.
They're in order, as far as you know.
Yes, and site plans as well.
Is there going to be a manager for the business?
Yes.
And did they do some kind of manager registration with you?
Yes, they did.
All right. Now, were you able, did they provide to you as the clerk, the sketch of the property, architectural renderings, those kind of things?
Yes, they did, and council has it in their packet this evening. Their sketches include where the location of the walk-in freezers are, or the walk-in refrigerators, where the kitchens are, where the food will be served, where the sinks, hand washing. So it's an architectural drawing of the entire building and where everything is located.
Were you able to go to the property and see that a sink was where it's supposed to be, and those kind of things?
Yes, and I actually have been involved with the Regenbachs for several months now in the planning process. So I have visited that location on multiple times, helping them with where to put things, how to do different things for the tavern license.
All right. So in your opinion, has the applicant submitted all the forms and documents required by the city and state?
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there anything else you would like to add as part of this hearing?
Uh, no, sir.
Does the council or members of the licensing authority have any questions of this matter before we?
I think it was very thorough in the packet.
All right. Thank you, Nita. Who do we have here that's going to speak for the applicant?
Probably ahead of speaking, Kyle Regenbach.
All right. Do you want to come on up here to the stand and state your name for the record?
Sure. So Kyle Regenbach. I'll be representing the Rain Brews, and we have a small presentation prepared today. I don't know if that's the time for it, but...
Well, let me do this. I'm going to probably run through some questions, and they may sound like we're prying a lot into your business, but the Liquor Licensing Authority has certain regulations and what the state requires of the city to make sure that you're a good operating business.
Sure.
And so, we're not trying to pry, but we just need to go through some things, and then I'll let you kind of make a presentation of anything else you would like to, maybe after I get kind of done here, okay?
Perfect.
All right. So what is your address here, Kyle?
The address for the business will be 104 Adams Street.
Okay. Can I call you Kyle, all right?
Yeah, that's right.
All right. What is your education and age?
29, bachelor's degree in accounting.
Are you a Colorado resident?
Yes.
And you submitted all the documents, as we've indicated here, to the clerk?
Yes.
All right. I just wanted to note that for your lease, you might double-check that, and I think it cut off the LLC on the landlord part.
Yeah, no worries. And then there's a front bit as well, so it would be just Rain Global LLC, so we'll correct that.
And you probably ought to start from today and maybe go an extra month, so you've got at least a year from today, so that you don't have any problems with the state.
Sure.
They like to have that there. All right. So the applicant is Rain Brews LLC, and that's a limited liability company?
Correct.
And who makes up the members of that LLC?
The owners, Carol and I.
All right. And are you both 50% ownership?
Correct.
All right. And who owns the actual building of 104 Adams Street?
The owners as well, Carol and I.
Okay. And so you're somewhat leasing to yourself, if you will?
Yeah, it's more of a protection thing to make sure that any... There's a couple businesses within the building, so we just want to make it a little bit easier as far as organization-wise, tax, all that stuff.
All right. So are the two of you the only folks that have a financial interest in the LLC?
Correct.
And does that include the building and business as well?
Yeah.
Do you, is there any loans that are outstanding that, with banks or anything like that?
Yeah, so we had a construction loan or remodeling loan, and then a purchase loan as well.
So does the LLC itself have any loans outstanding?
Not the Rain Brews loan, no, it does not have any.
Are you borrowing money from anyone else, any other individuals or other people that may have an interest in?
No, we just have the single, or the loans from the bank.
Do you or the LLC, have either of you ever applied for a license before a liquor license?
Not a liquor license, no.
Okay. And so you've not been denied a license by yourself or any member of the LLC?
No. We currently hold a home care license, and that's probably the majority of it.
All right. And so you, the LLC, will be renting from the landlord, which is Global, right?
Rain Global LLC, yes.
Okay. And I think, just to clear it up, you need to probably have a lease for one year and get that maybe submitted after the hearing here, maybe tomorrow or something.
Perfect, yeah.
All right. Now, are the premises, to your knowledge, within 500 feet of any public or private school?
Yeah, it's fairly far, or it's not within the 500-feet radius.
Okay. And how many licenses are within your neighborhood, would you say?
Liquor license? I think you need to cover it very well with the Nino's and Quincy's.
Okay.
And I guess the bowling alley would probably be relevant as well.
Okay. Well, typically, the whole, the city typically is the neighborhood, and so I guess we'll look at this and consider the entire city as being the neighborhood.
Sure.
Is there anyone besides the two members of the LLC that would be receiving any money from the business itself?
Besides the employees directly? No.
Okay. Do you intend to have employees?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Do you know how many you'll have at this point?
Currently, I think we have 16.
Okay. Now, who, will you be the manager of the business?
Yes.
Okay. Are you familiar with the liquor laws of the state?
It's coming along. We tried to figure out when we can start serving alcohol, and that was easy to figure out, but anything beyond that, we'll definitely do some research.
And they do have training programs. The state usually puts stuff on, so it wouldn't be a bad idea to get familiar with that, so keeps everything in order. Tell us generally what kind of business you're going to have there and what you're going to operate. I know it said taproom, and maybe just so the licensing authority knows what you're doing there.
Yeah, so...
What we wanted to do is, it's a very good retail spot, but we didn't want to have
the falter of the previous retailers, so we wanted to have something that was consumable and customized. So craft beer was kind of what we looked for, because that's kind of a growing, growing industry, and then allows for repeat visits as far as the consumable, and then customize as far as, you won't really be able to get the beer elsewhere, or outside of the brewery itself. So that's kind of what we wanted to go with that. And then the coffee shop is more complimentary to have the hours kind of more spread out and be along the same route as consumable and customized.
Okay. And so you also probably understand, in talking with Nita, that you need to have a certain amount of food that goes with your business as well?
Yeah, correct. A few of the other breweries, they serve like popcorn and peanuts. We want to do a little bit more inclusive, or more of a food that would be able to allow supper and dinner and breakfast. So we have soup, sandwiches, salads. That's kind of our main focus right now, dabbling with muffins and bagels and stuff.
Okay.
Exactly, yeah. So Carol just mentioned that we're close enough to other restaurants, and they're agreeing to being able to deliver. So Nino's is like two doors down, and we provide menus, and Nino's has been doing great about delivering. If people want the full meal, as far as nice burrito and burger and everything like that.
Okay. So, and the beer you're going to do is just from the brewery you're not going to have outside, or not?
We're gonna, right now, we're focusing on two breweries, Color Farm Brewery and then Three Barrel. We're probably going to add a few more, but they're all going to be locally based. We're probably going to do bottled beer as far as Bud Light, Dos Equis, stuff like that, but that's not going to be on tap. So that will just be more of making it more accessible for the people that want to kind of participate.
Okay. Now, do you, folks indicated to you that they would like this kind of an establishment at this location?
Yeah, we've had decent interest. When we first started looking at what we wanted to put in the building, a, something that would be along the lines of a tap house or restaurant was definitely high in priority. The physical limitations of the building didn't allow us to do a proper restaurant, so we had to do something that wouldn't require it. So having something that was a nice gathering point, that we would be able to have people deliver food and all that stuff, the tap house was very complimentary to be able to execute something like that.
And there aren't any other tap houses in the city, are there, that you know of?
There are not, no. I think the closest one is probably Three Barrel, but that's even a brewery. They don't bring other people. So I think there's one in South Fork that just opened up, I think, last month.
So you would kind of consider your business a little bit unique in terms of the liquor business, is that right?
Yeah.
Now, do you believe, I guess, that the needs of the community are not being met by other establishments that serve them?
I think the alcohol and other establishments are probably very well-versed, but what we're trying to do... trying to do is not be alcohol-inclusive, so we're trying to have more of a gathering place, and alcohol is more just complimentary to that. So if somebody wants... We've gotten a few offers as far as organization, people wanting to do events, um, like the vice president of the school wanna have a teachers' conference-type deal, and we're gonna probably execute an after-hours, and within that, we'll hopefully be able to do that better than the other establishments that have liquor license, just because of our size, our location, the parking available, and then the beer will just be able to make those events go a little bit smoother, has onsite refreshments.
Okay, did you happen to, uh, get any folks to sign a petition that they'd like to see this at your establishment?
We did. We actually... Yeah, we worked with most of the customers that came in, and we have it prepared here, if you would like to take a look. And some of them are sourced as far as people coming up from Texas or class reunion, and they were very interested in having something that didn't really have a full restaurant menu, but really had a nice cozy place to be able to just hang out and talk with their classmates and, uh, people that they wanna go on vacation with.
Well, it does look like most of the folks are residents.
Sure.
So, um, let's go ahead and make this petition part of the record as well, Nita. Um, all right, uh, those are kinda the questions I have for you, Kyle. If you wanna state anything else that we haven't covered or make any other type of presentation to the authority that might be relevant?
Sure. Yeah, I think we covered most of the stuff I'll cover in the presentation, but it's always nice to run through it.
Okay.
Perfect, so the goal of this is trying to describe what... Why Rain Brews is relevant and very good for Montevista. So we have... You need to kinda define it as far as where it's located, what we offer, and what we're gonna be moving forward. So the stuff that I wanna kinda hit on is consumable, customized, sandbox, and draw. So it's a very good retail spot that we didn't wanna suffer any loss or get outsourced by the internet basically, or fall to any outdatedness, so that's why we kinda went with these two points. And then Sandbox is making it more of a place that we can kinda modify to whatever we need to do. And then Draw is being just grabbing people from 160 basically and then bringing them to Montevista just to kinda explore what the town offers. So consumable, it needs to be more... So if you go to a clothing store near Montevista, you're probably gonna be able to find your style and your size a lot better on the internet, and we didn't wanna have that same problem. So we wanna have the repeat visits and then the complimentary to events to say that if we're running an event like, uh, an after-hours, then the people can just be aware of what the menu actually is and be able to order from that. And then customized, we're actually working with all local breweries, like, um, our partner is Color Farm Brewery, they set up all their taps, so we're... They're growing the beer pretty much like a mile away from where it's brewing, and we're buying all of it, and then we're selling it locally. And then, culture-wise, we're gonna feature some local artists. We have one lady that kind of came in, and then we have just a lot of offers from other artists as far as, um, John, he's gonna do some sculptures with metal, and then we just have a lot of other, um, offers out there. And then we're going to work with a pianist currently to have a nice, very personalized environment as far as the music. And then Sandbox, this is an event that we ran even before we started remodeling. You can see the green carpet, that's not currently there. So we're gonna probably do a lot of this, we're gonna probably do a major event, something like this once a week. Minor stuff will come here and there as far as having a local pianist and, um, stuff. So events is gonna be a huge deal. I actually... I'm working very closely with the Chamber of Commerce to make sure that we're in sync as far as every event that they're working with, and then making sure that we can, or enable them to have a nice place to execute everything that they wanna execute. So we did the Parade of Lights Cream Festival, all this stuff before we even finished remodeling, and then now that we're kind of open, we're actually scheduling stuff that we're able to do as it's open and ready to go. And then hours of operation, we wanted to have a... The Sandbox needs to be able to mold anything that we need at a wide range of daylight. So if we're open very early, then decently at night, so that people can... If they're going to the movies, that they can kinda go afterwards and just kinda debrief and have a nice place to not really worry about having anywhere else to go. And then I was... This is from personal experience, I was a web developer for a bit, and that's a job that you mostly do in your house, so having a place that offers an alternative as far as distraction-free or distraction less than the home, um, to be able to get work done like that. As far as like, maybe a writer would come in, artists would be able to come in as far as utilizing the space outside of getting distractions from home, and as far as like kids, husbands, all that stuff. And then Draw, we have... The geographic location is, you know, people going to Creed or the mountains or anything like that, so this... I... Another gentleman mentioned the statistics about actually how many cars travel on this, and it's quite high. It's a lot higher than you would get from traffic in Salida or Taos or these other very prosperous art towns. So we have a lot of potential as far as snagging the traffic that comes through here, and we would potentially be a great stop for them to start getting oriented to what Montevista has. So, and we're trying to utilize everything that, uh, that came with the building. As far as the transportation museum is very close, we're gonna be working very close to them, and then the building was one of the first buildings ever built in Montevista, so we were trying to restore... Or we restored the floors to make them look as good as they can. We exposed the stone that was built on the inside, and we're just making it as real as it was when it was built over a hundred years ago. And then that's pretty much it. UNETA did a great job of orienting, so I don't know if we'll have any other questions as far as what we're doing and what the goal of the building is. But the community has been amazing as far as support, pretty much everyone here as far as the council and all the members here, I've seen either during the construction process or within the week that we've been open. Does anybody have any questions?
Do you have a copy of that that we can make part of the record here?
Yeah, UNETA has a PDF on the flash drive I just gave her.
Great. Um, I don't have any other questions. I don't know if any of the members of the council have any other questions with Kyle here?
Yeah, really, it was pretty thorough. I will say that I was in there for the first time since the remodeling, and then in the last few days, and I was, um, I think it is, uh, marbles, which, um...
Yeah.
Inside there, we talked a little bit about the future of some, uh, lounging areas and that kind of thing, and, uh, what I... What I saw and tasted was, uh, was very impressive.
Great, thank you.
Do you have anything else on behalf of yourself or the LLC that you wanna present?
No, I think, uh, hopefully I covered everything relevant in the slideshow.
All right, I thought you covered very well. All right, well, let's do this. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the applicants here? All right, why don't we... Why don't we start with, uh, right here? If you wanna... Kyle will let you sit down, and, uh...
Perfect.
If you wanna just state your name and, uh, address for the record and, uh...
Sure, my name is Ken Hamco. Uh, I reside at fifteen nineteen Grand Avenue, which is the Sand Hill Inn and Suites down the street. Um, I just wanted to say as a businessperson and also as a member of the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce, it's fantastic to have another business opening in Montevista. It truly is. We, as a chamber, and me personally, um, are always looking for people, places, things to bring it to Montevista and grow Montevista business, and, uh, this is fantastic, and I'm all for it, and hopefully everybody else is too, so I just wanted to say that. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Could you state your name and address for the record?
My name's Jenny Neering, and I reside at four sixteen Adams Street, so just down the street in a way from this establishment. Um, I just wanted to say that this type of business is what Alamosa has and Del Norte has, and, um, it's what Montevista needs. Um, and the fact that other... That you're allowed to, um, order from other restaurants, and you can even bring your own food in, those are all... These are ways that this business is benefiting the other existing businesses in our... In our community. So I just, um, wanna say that this is the sort of business that will help us catch up with our neighboring communities, Alamosa and Del Norte, and, um, it's a business that's been needed. I can speak to the notion of... I work at home, and I do need to change my scenery to be productive sometimes. Um, I'm also on the Cream Fest Committee, and we like to meet in local restaurants for some of our meetings, and this will be a perfect venue for many of those meetings. So I support it for many reasons. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? John?
Should I go up there?
Yeah.
I don't wanna move until I'm told.
Uh, if you would state your name for the record.
My name is John Wilder, and I'm actually two people tonight, so I have two speeches. I am an attorney, so I promise to keep them very, very short, but I'm here in two totally different capacities, and the applicants don't know anything about the second one, so I'll start with that. Uh, I have owned one twenty-four Adams for forty-eight... Forty-five years, and in that forty-five years, I have watched the ebb and flow of business on Adams Street like a hawk, and we all know that, uh, brick and mortar retail is simply dying all over the country. So there's only so many ways that you can put things into buildings in downtown Montevista, and this is one of them. And Adam Street is desperate to fill buildings with legitimate businesses, and this is absolutely a legitimate business. And so as a property owner who's a couple doors down the street, I would be here regardless of my second reason and plead with you not to let the Facet Building, which is one of the premier buildings in Montevista, to sit empty again, because it is truly sad to stand outside my office every morning, so I put my fan out so I can cool off, and look up and down that street and see how sad it is. There's vacancies are all over the place. I got a vacancy on my right to the north, and I'm soon going to have a vacancy on my left to the south, and that's just my two neighbors. So I... As a property owner, I say, please grant them this license. And some of you may know me as a lawyer, some of me... And I am not here as their attorney, absolutely. A few of you may know me as the former city judge, I'm not here in that capacity. I'm here in a capacity that not too many people know about. I have a third profession that I've had since I was fifteen years old. I am a... And I mean professional pianist. And I went down to have a sandwich a few days ago, and I mentioned it to the applicants, and all of a sudden I have a job. I play popular music. I have lived in this valley for forty-eight years. I lived in Ohio before that. I could play all that I wanted to play because everybody loved popular music. I do not play country and western. It's very hard on a solo piano unless you have a singer, and I don't sing. I don't play rock, it's impossible to play it on a solo piano, and I don't play mariachi because it's impossible to play on a piano. But I do play pop music, and I have been waiting for forty-eight years to find an establishment that wanted to have the kind of music that I can play, and I am so utterly delighted to have this chance, I can't even begin to put it into words. So for that reason also, I plead with you to let them have this license. Thank you.
John, it's good that we'll have you employed. Sean, did you wanna...
Yes.
Could you state your name and address for the record?
Sean Davis, I live at one four four-three County Road twenty-five here in Montevista. Um, I don't... I don't believe with people in here there's any question, but I just wanna state that, uh, knowing Carol, one of the applicants, for over fifteen years, I thought about what I would say to speak tonight, and I think the two words that came to mind were integrity and class. Um, and integrity means, of course, whether nobody's watching, whether they're gonna do the things the correct way and with honesty, even if nobody's watching, and I think there's any... There's no question about that. I've also found over the years working with Carol, she's very respective of the process that other people need to undertake. So when it comes to liquor license and the process of operating the establishment, I think her record would show that she will run it with the needs and respects of the laws that are there, and I think those are important things to consider, um, when you're looking at a liquor license, so, thank you.
Anyone else that wishes to speak in favor? Oh, come on. Could you state your name and address for the record?
Scott Deacon, two forty-four Tyndale. Um, I've watched this town, I've lived here all my life, and I've watched it... It was vibrant, everything was going, and then I've watched it die, and now I see a glimmer of businesses coming back in, and I just applaud them for coming in here, and I... And it's awesome. They're gonna fill a niche that people need. Like the other lady said, they won't... You won't have to go to Del Norte or Alamosa. I'm just totally positive about it, and I'm just happy, and I just wanna say bravo. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to state their name?
Well, after all that, all I can say is ditto.
If you would state your name and address?
My name's Les Kujer. Catch up to you with the spelling. And, uh, we live a little bit out of town, two miles right across from the theaters. My wife has a bookstore, thirty-eight Washington, that she's gonna open here next week, and she's being prouded to have authors come by, sign book signings and book clubs. Thank you. We'll be there.
I think I saw another hand up there. If you wanna state your name and address for the record?
My name's Corinne Alathorp, and on behalf of myself and my husband, Bill, he was really excited about what you're doing. He's really proud of Carol because she's able to go out and make something happen, and that's how Bill was. He just liked to get out there. One of the things that he and I talked about, and we were there to see it a couple weeks ago, uh, we really hope you'll put in some kind of a drive-in, drive-through, so we can stop and buy some drinks. Because some elderly people don't really like to get out and walk around, but I think it would really help it a lot in the community to have a drive-through. And thank you very much for thinking of everybody in the community. We're proud of you.
Anyone else? Well, I don't see any other hands up, uh, at this point. I don't know if there's anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the license. This would be your chance at this point. Okay, I guess I don't see anybody that wishes to speak in opposition, so at this point, on behalf of the licensing authority, we'll go ahead and close the hearing. Um, just for the council's information, the council could wait thirty days to make a decision under the law. Um, either way, uh, we must make a decision in writing to the applicant, so, um, or the council can vote to approve it or disapprove it tonight, so... With that in mind, I'll go ahead and close the hearing and turn it back over to the council.
You can back in session.
Your speaker, I would like to make a motion to approve...
Mayor Becker, I would like to make a motion to approve the liquor license for Rain Brew LLC. There's a liquor license.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to be approved, the Tavern Liquor License of Rain Brew's LLC located at 104 Adams Street, Montevista. Is there any more discussion?
I'd just like to say that I think you've done a fantastic job. I know you have. There've been difficulties that you discovered long. I applaud you for working through those and bringing up another project.
Thank you for your support.
And I would just like to say that for personal reasons, I'm going to recuse myself from the liquor board for this particular instance.
Any more discussion? Nita?
With Councilor Ellathorpe recusing herself, we still do have a quorum. So with that being said, Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve.
Welcome to Montevista. And I will say now that when I was in the building, I've seen the hard work you've done and it's pretty amazing. Good job, Kyle.
Yeah, thank you.
Revolutions, disturbances, contracts, agreements and leases. IGA for coordinated election for Rio Grande County Clerk and Recorder.
Good evening, Council. So before you, as an IGA with the Rio Grande County Clerk and Recorder's Office, that IGA is to do a coordinated election for 2019, November seventh, or excuse me, November fifth. We have two council seats that will be open, so that will be on the ballot and we also have potentially a table question that will be on the ballot as well. So asking for approval to move forward with the coordinated election this evening.
I'm going to approve of the intercomamental agreement for coordinated election as presented.
I would second that motion.
It's been moved, seconded to approve the IGA to coordinate election of Rio Grande County Clerk and Recorder. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion approved.
For airport lease.
Evening, Mayor Councilors. So in front of you this evening, you have an airport lease operating contract for your consideration. Number of things I'd like to point out on this. The Airport Board in the city issued an RFP for fixed base operator contract. Current operator of the airport is Art Jones. That agreement actually expired in May and he agreed to stay on throughout the RFP process and he has been there for quite some time. He's also ready to move on. So he's ready to transition his longstanding management of the airport and we received one response to the RFP and that is the entity that we have the proposed contract with this evening, which is Iron Creek LLC. So this is a ninety day contract only. Part of that issue is that the Airport Board, and by email, they've all endorsed this methodology. They'll actually be meeting August fourteenth with the applicant to kind of go through the RFP responses. There's a number of duties that they would like to make sure or then illuminate further in this contract. This contract itself is kind of the boilerplate the city's had for longer than I've been here as far as what this contract looks like. So there's a few details that we need to iron out, you know, things have changed. But one of the issues here was continuity of services. So the owner or the principal of Iron Creek is actually working with other small airports in the valley on fuel services. And one of the issues we have at the airport currently is our current methodology of providing fuel services. There's some issues such as the card readers that we use are no longer supported as of May. So they still work, but there won't be any way to repair them going forward if they go down. We also have some issues with the tanks that we have and the methodology of fuel provisions and some other things. Really don't have a longstanding airport operations manual and that would be part of the requirements of this contract, assuming, you know, with the negotiation with the Airport Board and the provider, that that would also become part of what we have. I think that the RFP response had some good ideas that need to be fleshed out as far as some different services and things which the airport could offer beyond what it currently does. It would include things like, one of the things that's included in here is a courtesy vehicle. And that's, you know, for most of our operators, that's not a necessity. However, for visiting pilots, that is kind of a very useful thing to have and many pilots are used to that. So part of this whole thing, you know, we're doing an airport master plan right now with our consultants. And so working in the, the expectations of the master plan along with the air, the expectations of the airport users is really where we're going with this. And this contract doesn't take us quite there and we didn't really anticipate it would, but we wanted to have the continuation of fuel services and management and it also creates an opportunity for Art to impart his knowledge over the next ninety days or so to get this taken care of. So essentially what staff's requesting tonight is that the council approve this airport lease operating contract for a period not to exceed ninety days with Iron Creek LLC. And then we'll have the Airport Board meeting, they'll make recommendations, we'll make modifications to the agreement with the assistance of the city attorney and we'll end up somewhere within the next ninety days with a more perfected document. So I don't know if you have any particular questions from council, but I'll be happy to try to answer them.
I do, I have enforced a pretty thorough information that you gave and what was in the packet as well. Are you having any questions? I'm not doing this part.
I make a motion to approve the IGA contract with Iron Creek.
Yes.
For the airport lease.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the ninety day contract for Iron Creek. Airport lease?
I think because of the family relationship that I have with Iron Creek LLC, I think I will rescind my vote this time as well. Sorry.
Recuse?
Recuse.
Yes, thank you.
Any more discussion? Nita?
Again, with Counselor Ellathorpe's refusal, we still have a quorum. Counselor Johnson? Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're still in the hot seat, Paul?
I brought paperwork with me. Well, to editorialize a little bit, you all have a copy of this proposed AIA contract. This is actually really exciting, if you ask me, and since I'm standing here, I get to say that. This is really progress on this particular project and it's been envisioned for a long time, over a decade. And it's kind of been fits and starts, but the council's worked with the friends of Sky High over the, you know, past six or eight months and, you know, it's all, well, maybe it's twelve months, but it's actually kind of coalesced into a point where we have an actual meter of progress, which is this contract. I'll point out a few things about this contract. You all may recall that the city of Montevista received a grant from DOLA, that's a matching grant, to pay for part of the schematic design services. So what you have in front of you this evening, which is the part that this contract envisions and actually has a number on, is partially covered by that grant. We had three parties participating in this part of the process, the city and the DOLA grant being part of it. And we had envisioned that it would actually cost more money than this. We're looking at a total of fifty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars and we had anticipated it would cost up to seventy-five thousand dollars when we submitted the grant successful. So we have that point definitely going towards it. The agreement has been reviewed by the city attorney and myself and all the other parties. And one of the great things about using this particular form is it's a very enforceable legal contract that's been around, these AIA documents. I've worked with them for twenty years and they've been around a lot longer than that. So it's a very specific performance kind of agreement. And so honestly, I think that it's really solid and it's just really exciting. Some of you have seen the initial artist renderings, which we're not rolling out, but it was kind of to give a conceptual idea. And I really think that we're moving towards a very positive space that'll be beneficial to the community in a lot of ways. The multipurpose building itself would be larger than it is now and it'll accommodate certainly our major events better, you know, our major events turn away vendors. And that's a good problem to have, but it's not a problem that can be solved without additional space. Also in, as this evolves, there's additional meeting space, which then will allow us to take on all kinds of different smaller events, you know, conferences, those kind of things that will also enhance the facility's ability to move forward. So I'll get off my soapbox now, but I would really recommend that the council approve this signature tonight and there's actually two parts of what we seek for approval, that the council will authorize the city manager to execute the AIA document and be designated as the city's representative and construction manager.
Well, I mean, we approve the AIA document as presented and appoint the city manager as the representative and whoever else you say.
Yep, that'll cover it.
I second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the AIA document. And let the horse do, yes. Is there any more discussion? And I am really excited that this is finally kicking off.
It's an exciting time, isn't it? I'm just excited.
This poor horse has been reading to nothing but dreams.
Well, we're going to do it.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Carla.
And I'm still here. Okay. So just a few things we covered already that were in my report. There are the, the CML Fall District Meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September twenty-fourth from forty-eight PM in San Luis. If any of you are interested in going to that, you can contact Nita. On a much closer basis, the SLV Economic Conference is following Monday in Alamosa and the registration technically closed today. If any of you are all interested, if you can contact Nita first thing tomorrow morning, we can still get you in. I'm going to go to that conference, of course, both with my city hat on and my URGED hat on, so. You know, Plague for Neighborhood Night Out, a lot of planning and work's gone into that. Counselor Lorenz has been very involved in that and the committee's done, I think it's going to be, it'll definitely be better than last year, it's bigger, we have more stuff going on. We've got a lot more community service groups and things showing up. There's also a basketball tournament that's going to be part of it. And so I really think it'll be a lot of fun. There's going to be face painters and I think rock painters and of course, free hamburgers. So looking forward to cooking those again. But it should be a great event Tuesday evening and, you know, a lot of people in the community know it, but everybody's welcome to come out and, you know, we probably have four hundred and fifty hamburgers we could serve and last year, I think we served almost four hundred, so. That ought to be a lot of fun. It's a lot of work on the part of staff and the committee and the sponsors and it really is a great event. And there's some nice prizes and giveaways and things like that. And of course, there'll be the tug of war between the police department and the fire department. And there was a newly created traveling trophy for that, which is, I think, really cool. So, you know, we'll see if the police department can be a two-year winner. The other thing I just wanted to mention, you know, Stampede was really great this year. I think we had really, really good attendance and so, you know, like Saturday night was crazy busy. I think the concert obviously is well attended and, you know, I want to thank the Stampede Committee for all their work, but I also want to recognize, you know, we recognize Public Works for their general amount of work they do, but the police department and Public Works, it wouldn't happen without them. You know, a lot of the city employees have a little piece of it, but those two departments really carry a lot of weight. I know that they were busy, they were busy, you know, both of them, you know, from the parades all the way up to the events, you know, we kind of have this thing, once we get to Thursday and the concert lights up, things are going. And Public Works part kind of drops off, but still is there with parades and obviously the police department is integral. The chief did a really great job of, you know, for the second year in a row, creating a formal operations plan. And we had Rio Grande County Sheriff's Department, officers from Alamosa Police Department, State Patrol had a really strong presence, particularly Saturday night, I noticed that, and our police officers. So really a great event and I just wanted to congratulate everyone for a great job. And, you know, there's so many people and different organizations involved and it really is like a crown jewel in the community and a couple more years is going to be the big anniversary, so looking forward to that. And that's all I have, unless you all have any questions. Great, thank you very much.
I just want to thank the police force for being a very visible presence. I saw you guys everywhere and I didn't know, I don't know how you did that, but you had lots of backup and I really want to say thank you. I know you guys dread that because everybody's out on the streets, everybody's, you know, having a good time and I just appreciate you guys being out and present.
Thank you.
I know, I talked to one of the officers and he said, "I'm going to go home and get a little bit of sleep and then get up and do it all over again." And you guys do a great job.
I just wanted to say something about National Night Out. I just want to remind everybody that at National Night Out, I will also have a booth there for anybody who's interested in running in city council. So there'll be a presentation with packets that people who are interested in running can pick up that evening and then they can start sending out their petitions to run that next day, on the seventh.
Mayor, Council, I didn't have a chance to do a report last time, so, and this will be short, but I did really want to welcome Kyle and Carol to the Facet Building. I mean, I really think they did a great presentation in what they did. And as you can see, these liquor licenses are a lot of paperwork, a lot of hurdles and Nita, Nita did a great job putting everything together as well and you guys did a great job and I- everything together as well, and you guys did a great job, and I'm certainly pro-business, and I know this council is, so it, I'm sure you'll be very successful. Good luck. Just generally, I would like the council to know that we did look at your contracts, and I look at every contract that goes through, just in case you may not know, but I tried and looked at the airport lease, made some thoughts and recommendations to Forrest when we do the permanent contract, and looked at the Sky High contract, and it's a typical, very standard, good agreement, and so, really excited about that. We were very busy in our last court session, and I think we're gonna be there probably for the rest of the summer, be very busy, but things are running good. Things are, everything is done very well so far. We did get one little case, and I don't know if Forrest sent you a copy of the order in that federal case where the city was being sued, I guess, but that got dismissed, and so we don't have any more litigation, so, hooray.
Yay.
So, so that's good news. And then really just reviewing all this liquor stuff and the applications, I mean, just an awful lot of stuff to go through and a lot of hoops to jump through for the applicants, but overall, they've done a good job, and I think our staff, Nita's done a good job getting things ready, and so it went about as smooth as you can go. So, that's really all I have. We are working a little bit on trying to get the three guys an urban renewal, a contract put together for those folks, and did chat with Sean Davis, who's now the new boss, I guess, at Rio Grande Savings. Might be working with him a little bit on some of the provisions they have in their deed, and maybe try and get something done, but busy, lot of stuff going on, and if anybody has any questions, I'll try and field them. Otherwise, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Counsel Committee, City Commission, and Counsel Rehearsal. So, we'll start. Let's hear it. We're gonna start on this?
Okay, then. Well, I want to just emphasize what's already come up, the stampede success, the National Night Out coming up, or whatever it is.
It's the next Thursday.
Anyhow, and just before that, the Economic Development Summit on Monday. I'll be there, and it's always been on the top of my list ever since I got to this town and what we're seeing that we've heard about today, whether it's the Sky High development, the business coming into town, and how many businesses are prospering, have been around a little bit to visit and see some of that. I also want to give a happy birthday, not just... But today, 143 years ago, the great territory of Colorado, August 1st, 1876, became the great state of Colorado, and it just happens to fall on August 1st today, so happy birthday, Colorado, 143 years. And I wanted to bring that up along with everything else that's been going on, because there's a new atmosphere, new environment, there's a sense in this town that we're headed in the right direction, and attitudes are changing, and, golly, business is changing, and things are going definitely in the right direction. Anyhow, that's, that was my soapbox, but that's, there's more, but I'll end at that.
I have been otherwise occupied for the last few weeks. However, I did make it to the commissioner's lunch. I had the occasion. That was a nice lunch, and it's always interesting to meet with the county commissioners. They have a whole different view of things than we do. They look at the bigger picture, and they're excited about things going on in Montevista. So, that was a good lunch to attend, and I'm glad I was able to do that. Very good. National Night Out Tuesday night, and thank you so much to Forrest and Chief and the police department and all our first responders that are gonna come and be part of that, and I appreciate that very much. The 100th anniversary of the library is coming up in August, and I'll have more information at the next meeting, the exact date and times, so that's a cool thing. Yep. And I just wanted to say thank you to Nita and Mike and Judge Solers for the community service people that are out and about in the community, and I know people appreciate that.
Well, I just wanted, anybody from the Stampede that portion not here but are watching for what event that they put on, that was absolutely amazing, and went off pretty quiet, but without any issue using keywords. I'd say it was just a slow, easy event. I got the pleasure of meeting Randy Hauser and visiting with him, and I represent myself as being the mayor, and he told me that the city was amazing, that he felt more at home here than he has a lot of places, and it was very open, and indoor, and comfortable, and he was too.
And he did like our golf course, too. You know?
That's cool.
He said, "Yeah, he'd even got a golf course." So, he went out and had a nice afternoon or morning of golf, too.
So, as always, to be diligent in your neighborhood, there's still bad guys that keep dealing with his job, but pay attention to what's going on, because there's still things happening, but if you stay diligent and report what we see, then we make it safer as we go. At that point, that's all I had. We will be going into executive session, and then we will come back out of executive session to adjourn. So...
So, I make a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section 24-6-402, 4A.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to be going into executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section 246, 402, 4A. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Ella Thorpe?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We're gonna break. Mr. Mayor, for me, a 10-minute recess, please. 12:00 U.S. 7:00. Yes.